All right, let's call our meeting order. Please stand for a quick agreement. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll call all board members are present. We do have proper notification of an open meeting. Welcome to all our guests. We're not used to having companies, so we appreciate you coming out. First is recommendation or the motion to approve the minutes of our February 13th, 2019 regular board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any question on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye. Ayes opposed. Motion carries. Next is a resolution to approve the bill list, which was part of your package.
Make a motion to approve the bill list.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second. Any question on the bill list? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye. Ayes opposed. Motion carries. Next item is communication cabinets from everyone to the public.
No one signed yet.
All right. You're so disappointed. Before I forget, in between the sign and the certificate, I want to say, I'm sure. Next item is superintendent's report.
And my superintendent's report is related to this fabulous audience that we have here today, including some of our teachers and some young folks. The teachers we have here today are Terry Carnell, Liz Jorgensen, Becca McCann, Heidi Hamilton, and Dave Gurek. They will tell us a little bit about a newer writing process, process-driven student writing, and then they have some students here to share some of their work. So I'll turn it over to the Arrowhead teachers, whoever wants to start.
Well, I'm Terry. And the history of this was Liz and I were actually at, I lost the role. Liz and I were actually at U of M Madison at a writing conference last, maybe January. And then we had listened to a lady from Wana Ke talk about process grading, conference grading, contract grading, all these things in essentially gradeless classroom, which the two of us had always been saying, like, we really loved the college of the workshops that style, where the kids come and they just work on their writing, and there's no strings attached, grades attached, and just work for themselves and try to get better and better. And so we loved that kind of a model. So when we heard this, we were really excited. We liked what we heard there. So then we came back and Liz had heard of an opportunity, DPI was called Every Teacher a Leader Summit, and so we wrote a proposal for that, and then they accepted our proposal. So then we had to recruit a couple more people. And so Heidi was a great asset with the special needs, co-teacher with Liz, and of course, Becca was another really great asset because we all teach writing classes. And so then we went for two days and we took a group day at Maplefield, so it was a really neat opportunity. And we worked with a group of people and like a critical friend who kind of walked through the lecture and talked about, like, what is a reason for doing this? Sometimes we know the what, but not the why. So they were kind of able to consensus about that. And we're excited when we came back. Then we had some curriculum time, and then we rolled it out in first semester, and we're happy with our results. We've been a little tweaking, and I'm still kind of in the process of the whole process-driven grading approach.
Sure. You know, we really want students to have authentic opportunities for their voice and to learn that what they write matters and has a place in the world. And we want them to focus on creating the best possible piece of art that they can. We want them to view us as on their side, not the person there to say, you're doing your semicolon wrong and minus one here, but instead here are all these opportunities to make your art stronger, to help your art resonate with a larger audience. I tell my students that I view our class like a choir class or like a FIAD class. You come in every day and you perform. And while you're performing in real time, you get feedback on that performance in order to help make your piece better. We talk about things, you know, I'm not saying that my view is right, but I'm just telling them what my response is to their art so that they can make an intelligent choice as that artist.
So the key was really feedback. We didn't like that there was an arbitrary grade, and kids were oftentimes frustrated because they worked really hard and they were getting C. And if you got your feedback at the end on the final draft, there was really no way to improve. And so that was the piece that we just didn't like. So we wanted to have the feedback ongoing so that then they could keep working and they would get to that, you know, great spot at a different level for, you know, student.
Yeah. Every day we come in and we try to be better today than we were yesterday. That focus always on constant improvement. And they learn so much about themselves, not only as people, but also as writers. They learn, I'm really strong at using metaphor. I need to work on my use of dialogue, or whatever it is, and that is huge in helping them grow their skills. Can I talk a little about special needs? Yeah. Our students with special needs are really intimidated by the writing process to begin with. They either don't have the confidence, or they struggle with their writing skills. So with this process-driven approach, we hold them accountable, and they get to write every single day, and they get points, and they get feedback from us, and it really helps them gain that confidence that they need. And it's really a beneficial grade process for our students with special needs because it helps them gain that confidence that they need on a daily basis, like I said, that will be comfortable. So a lot of what we do, we send off to writers' markets, publications, competitions, just trying to share with students the power of being a writer and practicing the craft of professional writers.
So some of the, well, we chose three students to come and share their pieces. And Daniel, I put Daniel in the copies first, so.
So yeah, Daniel was in creative writing. And this piece, the students were asked to work in intergenerational teams for the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency. And it's a neat way to start off a semester because the students get to choose who they want to work with. Many of the students do choose to work with me, and then that's a nice opportunity for them to, to practice. What is it like to have the teacher on my side, to work with me throughout the whole writing process? And so, Daniel, you want to talk a little bit maybe about your piece, the process?
Yeah. And Daniel was in creative writing, composition, creative writing, and advanced composition. So we figured we had a spectrum of experiences. And he's actually graduated at semester, so he came back to make a special guest, so that's exciting for him too. But yeah.
Yeah, I'll just read my piece. It was called Medicine for My Mind. Absorbed in an ocean of green, a four-by-six opening of grass and protruding stones draw me in and volunteers to serve as a homestead for the night. For my roof, I tried tying a tarp to a burly pine, spotting a trail of ants, scaling the bark, I paused to study the army. Approaching the rope like a car to its deep end, it typically crawled across the foreign object and continued their journey. Adventuring through the natural beauty between Minnesota and Canada, the Boundary Waters, I am not only in search of finding myself, but the mystic wonders concealed in the raw landscape. A sheet of spongy moss lives with the patchy grass acting like a cold, living mattress ready to accommodate species of travelers. Laying down a half-inch thick pad with a cozy sleeping bag on top, I hear the calming call of a common moon echoing across the earth, washing my mind, luting my soul of stress and unease. Unable to rest, I walk to escape this surrounding grove, arriving at the undisturbed lake in time to catch a pair of beavers flying through the still water. Situated on a boulder, partially submerged in a clear lake, lies land on my lips. While I swat left and right, I occasionally knock one to the water. A school of minnows sit and stare, appreciating the freezing. Down the embankment, I see a family of mallards waddling in a straight line. Like elementary students following the teacher down the hallways, one by one, they hop in the water. As a unit, they paddle around the lake, never letting a family member fall behind. It reminds me of home. Arriving at my shelter, I set up a mesh cover over my bed, like a coffin, allowing me to breathe in the heavy, damp, dirt-smelling atmosphere. The thin casket stands as the barrier between the airborne insects and my humble carcass. The black sky sprinkled with stars, pokes through the leaves, creates a calming canvas for my manic mind to turn onto. The simple serene symphony of nature soothes my soul by give-back massage, surrendering the stress, absorbing the burden. Resting my head on my pillow made of moss, I await the buried beams over treetops, transforming the lake into a pool of golden honey. With the sun peeking over the horizon, I prime my eyes open and look out beyond. Due engulfed the four-by-six opening, leaving a shimmering coat of water, reflecting limited drops of sunlight visible from my porches. I pack my belongings up as to not disturb the natural beauty that served as my campsite, thanking it as I stroll back to the shelter. Bog lingered across the water, muffling the sun's reflection, as I take a mental picture, hoping to never lose the experience of winter.
Oh, vocabulary.
What an animation.
So we also try to, especially in advanced comp, we read our pieces aloud a lot, so we know this was more creative writing, we did a lot of that in the composition, trying to get the kids to comprehend their voices and taking pride in ownership in that. Of course, we did read the piece as well, and had everybody try to have an academic dialogue about what they liked, rather than just think it's great, what particularly stood out.
Is that based on a true experience?
Yes, it is.
Well described, very neat.
Next is Emily. So Emily DeBrecht had submitted a, not for a contest, that has not yet, they usually choose their winners a little bit later, but the Library of Congress, it's letters of all literature. And so they choose books that have had a meaning to themselves, and they write to the author, could be dead or alive, but just not saying how they liked the book, but how the book really impacted their lives.
So for this piece, I wrote to AIG Thomas about the book The Haiti Give. Dear Ms. Thomas, your novel changed my perspective on a situation I felt at understock. The Haiti Give was eye-opening. Recently, I have felt as if every time I turn on the news, there's a story about an African-American person being brutalized by a police officer. Reading The Haiti Give makes the news more than just another story. And every time a similar story comes on, I just ask myself why. I think of Khalil, whose hairbrush was mistaken for a gun. I think of Starr, who used her voice to try to make a change, and I think of how much of an impact it has on a community. The second I opened the book, I was completely enthralled and finished it in one sitting, mainly to the fact that I felt unintelligent perceiving that such a situation could have only affected a handful of people. About four years ago, we went to Portland, Oregon for a family visit. My cousin Malcolm had been carefully driving through the streets and almost missed a stop sign. Everyone seemed fine until Brianna, in a sense of panic, said, Malcolm, you've got to be more careful, the police are sitting right there. Immediately tensed up. This moment really helped me strengthen my perspective. I remember trying to think of how it would be to have a heightened fear of those whose job is to protect and serve. After reading The Haiti Give, I've come to the realization that Malcolm's reaction wasn't just because he feared getting a ticket. All the scenarios I could have revised out of the situation flashed through his head. Malcolm was given the talk when he was just a kid. He was told what to do if he's ever pulled over. Keep your hands on your wheel, always say yes, sir, and yes, ma'am, ask before moving, and do as instructed. As a young African-American man, these thoughts are a common occurrence. Whereas myself, a young white woman, looked at the same situation and thought, the worst I could come up with is a ticket. The Haiti Give taught me that I could not be wrong. In the novel, Starr remembers when Maverick, her father, sits herself and her brother seven down for the talk. At a young age, Maverick expresses children what to do in any circumstance where they must interact with a police officer. Listen to what they say, do as you're told, keep your hands where they can see them, and don't move an inch. I read this immediately and thought about them. From a young age, my parents always told me that if there's an emergency, the police would be right there right away to help. But for many African-Americans, this seems far from the truth. How can you trust the people that are supposed to protect and serve, and time and time again, this trust has been disproven? Your story digs deep. It takes this concept, that to me seems like many, it's just thrown under the rug and tells the reader the story, why the story needs to be told. I particularly enjoyed how you graphed the story through all your perspectives from various characters. From the perspective of Detective Uncle Carlos, to Starr, who had witnessed her childhood friend Khalil shot and killed right before her eyes, to Maverick, who sent his children to a private prep school to get away from the neighborhood school, but continued to live in their neighborhood to keep the family roots. When my aunt first recommended your novel to me, she said, this has the potential to be as highly regarded in schools as to kill a mockingbird one day. And I could not agree with that statement more. You bring to the front a story that too many people might feel afraid to speak about. Honestly, this story changed me. I have a voice, and it's my job to use it to advocate for others, especially those causes that are close to me. Most importantly, thank you for showing me that there's so much more that has to be done for equality. I hope your novels, I hope that novels such as these will also help others realize that stories like Khalil should never have to occur. Sincerely, Emily Catbridge.
And you were saying, was this novel, that Emily has the process-based assessments impacted the way that you felt about writing? Are you comfortable talking about it a little bit?
So before this, like, I always kind of enjoyed writing, and when I was younger, I always kind of thought that I wanted to be like a screenwriter or something, but then I just started to lose a lot of interest in writing, and it just kind of abhorred and honestly. And so before advanced comp, I was really nervous because I'd heard that it's a pretty rigorous course. But I think like the process-based system helps me to gain a lot of confidence because it's not like, like, I could spend like hours working on a piece and then like be given like, like, not a bad grade, but something that's like, oh, like, that's kind of hard to look at. So it's just like really nice knowing that the teachers are like looking at your progress and helping you like improve as you're going along, but they're seeing that you're making that progress. Totally looked at.
Do they share your work with your classmates?
Yes.
So it's a part of the review and evolution of the work?
Yeah.
Do you find yourself refining thoughts that you started to commit to paper, or are your thoughts themselves changing in the course of your reading?
I think maybe both. Hearing other people's input was like really important too, because it helps give you a perspective that you might have thought about, or a different way to word things.
That's very nice. Thank you for hearing.
Emily, I'm wondering, your piece is so excellent, and I think you do a really great job of relating how this novel impacted you. Did you send this to the author, or does that organization that you submitted it to, will they send it to the author? Because why, I tell you what, if I were the author and I read this, I would just, I'd be in tears. Oh, I writing did this for someone.
So we should do that.
Okay, good idea number one, right there.
Well, and it's nice because it incorporates reading too, you know, so all of these creative writing, advanced comp, composition, are all writing courses, but you can't really get away from the reading either, whether it's reading each other's pieces, I mean, it's just reading like a writer. We talk about that a lot, which is different than reading. And kids don't really think about what that even means or is until, you know, we do it and practice it. But it also introduces, it makes them think about things that they've learned, or read in other places, and brings all of their learning to the.
As a minimum, it's good to really think that they're going to get help from comments or understanding that they tend to, it's really obvious, like, so you really get them in there. Really reading too.
And yeah, the vulnerability, I mean, you know, Daniel or Caroline can probably undo that too, as far as getting a cure or a solution. It's not always something everybody likes to do, and I teach freshman sophomores, seniors, so sometimes it's painful at first, and sometimes it's painful even in the living comp. Like, just because some of us are better at it than others, or we all go to that safe, like, here's a comma, but that a comma may risk error. You don't even worry about the comma until you get the content right, because that may change, and your comma may be irrelevant and that, like. Anything you guys want to add?
Well, our advanced composition class was really small, so we got to look at each other's pieces a lot more and talk more about them, dive deeper into them, which really helped.
Even other people's papers helped you a lot, so they're from each other.
When you sit down to write, do you write, or do you use Google Docs? Like, do you really? I just question, because like, do you, I feel a lot more creative in my writing when I write, rather than typing. I'm not a very good typist. But is there any difference to?
We're all.
We do get older.
I'm older, but.
We.
Well, like, in the beginning of all of our writing classes, we wrote in a journal for 10 minutes. So it kind of like got us into the writing mindset and like got us into the creative stage, and like gave us a break from the school day and got us into like the writing mood.
That is something new that we added with the process-based assessment, is a low-stakes, safe place to just express. And there's no rules, like, don't worry about grammar, just pen to paper, something that, you know, we don't do a lot of, and having that exercise where kids were more open to trying things and doing things differently with the pen and the paper. And like you were saying, we did that, we do that every day for 10 minutes.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
And they shared those too, so that was something we talked about, you know, and sometimes you created ideas there that would be used later on in the paper too. So it was just, we had done a little bit of research about that, and then thought, well, let's try it and see what happens. And so, so far, I mean, that was one of the things that everybody seemed to like. Not maybe we're going to kickback, like, what is this notebook thing? And they weren't, they were happy, actually, a little bit refreshed to take a break from talking about saving it and putting it with their yearbooks and having that as like a time capsule of their senior year. I mean, it really, it was neat to see their response to.
I think they can be more expressive. I mean, I think that's what you find right off the bat. I mean, it's so much easier to be than to find, how am I going to get that across? When I'm writing, you could, you know, go wild.
I still have my journal, and I look at it once in a while, and I think, what a door. Of course, that was just last week. I think that's great.
And lastly, we have Caroline Shamsa, who, Caroline wrote this piece. So Caroline has been in all of the writing contests as well, and she submitted, well, this was a narrative piece, so since she's a senior in composition last semester, she didn't, I think she chose not to do a college essay, so she wrote this as a narrative piece instead. And so then this contest was like the perfect thing from the Autism Society to submit this piece for, so she did, and she won first place, which we just found out yesterday.
Oh, wow.
So that was really exciting for her.
Sure. Every day, I dress in my casual school attire of a beige club-based sweatshirt and basic boots, displaying my undying obsession with dogs. As soon as I go to school, I stroll through the hallways until I arrive at American Problems. I pass by students having average teenage conversations while I stand by the door, waiting for the key to grant my entry. When they look at me, they assume that I'm just an average teenage girl. However, there is one quality that differentiates me from everybody else, my autism. Growing up with autism has created challenges at times. Skills that other children grasp quickly, like holy a spoon, took me longer to master. I participated in physical and occupational therapy to help me with daily tasks such as eating. In school, I occasionally had special slash adapted FIAD physical education classes, which helped me with my coordination imbalance, in addition to giving me exercise. When I was younger, I had some sensitivity to noises and often experienced sensory overloads. The jumble of conversations in an ordinary classroom was difficult to process, as I often requested it to be silent. For other kids, recess was a time to release the wild energy of bearing within. But for me, I stood alone in my fourth-grade teacher's classroom. At times, she would give me papers to work on, relieving my boredom. Most of my recesses were spent sitting to the fluffy butterfly chair, waiting for the shoulder to rest and rushing. The lunchroom was an obstacle for me. The buzzing conversations, the overwhelming smell of pizza were impossible for me to handle. My teachers encouraged me to try earplugs, which only worsened my fears. The unbearable background noises were relentless, triggering overload. I frequently ate lunch in a separate room, embracing some peace and solitude. Occasionally, one of my classmates would join me and escape from loneliness. The majority of these issues vanished once I started middle school. Similar to most students with autism, I struggle with social views. I see things in a black and white sense, meaning that I don't see the whole picture. When someone makes a joke, I might not get it at first. Once I am told it was a joke, I will occasionally understand, but most of the time, I do not because I take them seriously. Secondly, I struggle to interpret body language. I am unable to tell how people are feeling through their bodies. If someone seems sad, I won't be able to see it. Through my eyes, I only see a person. Social interactions are a major obstacle for me as well. For example, making friends is like a maze, running an endless possibilities and conflicts. I had a large group of friends in middle school, although it all changed when I got to high school. They started to discover their individual selves, trying to figure out where they fit in society. It has never been easy to find someone with my common interests, such as Big Brother, Survivor pods, and motion YouTube videos. One day, I hope to meet a person who will make a significant impact on my life. The students who I am currently friends with, we have few interests in common. The social aspect is hard for me to understand and makes it difficult for me to build relationships. Understanding abstract concepts such as symbolism is challenging for me. For example, if someone were to ask me what the color white represents in the Great Gatsby, I wouldn't know how to answer. My interpretation of white is that it's mentioned in abundance of times. It doesn't represent purity, innocence, or honesty. Abstract concepts are taught in my American Problems class, and it's Wednesday, which means there's another reading assigned. I unzip the back pocket of my backpack, reaching for my Black and Bosset laptop I have had since freshman year. I patiently wait for the school Wi-Fi to load so I can start a new adventure. On Google Classroom, an assignment appears on the page, a series of black and white cartoons waiting for me to analyze them. These illustrations seem to be really nice to me, defeating a tedious task to scramble for their messages. I see those cartoons as light pictures. Information that is literally seven-day context is not as difficult to modify. My autism has blessed me with a talent, an outstanding memory. My parents discovered my memory when I was around five years old. I started looking at yearbooks, studying names. By the time I was finished looking up the yearbooks, I had memorized everyone's names, including students and teachers. I only knew one kid who knows everyone's name, and that's Caroline. I knew the names of the students and their cousins. My memory specializes in my interests such as names, dates, birthdays, and years. Who's that little kid? My dad sometimes asks me. I always have the answer to those specific questions. I'm like a human dictionary. Everyone can rely on me for information. My autism doesn't define my life. I don't allow my autism to stop me from achieving my lifelong dream, a career in the nursing field. I perceive my autism as a hidden gift only certain people would find.
Who knows infinitely more about what it might be like to have autism now, after hearing that? Caroline, you want to talk about an important piece of writing? An immensely important piece of writing.
She's asked to share it at, now I forget that.
Yeah, we did the English.
Yeah, but they're doing like a special presentation, so her family's invited, and she's invited, and she also got a cash prize, but they're going to publish it if she allows that to happen, and then also get there with a big audience. So that's really a very cool experience. And you read it today, do you want to share, she read it in our class, because we were celebrating that she had won the award, do you want to share a little bit about that? Your peers' reaction?
They're pretty surprised, you know, they were just sort of, they said that might be something about like, of like saying, of like demonstrating what it's like to have autism and that, like, that especially with like the sarcasm and the abstract concepts part.
You changed a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's a power to that.
If I may say, had you not read this about the topic of autism, I would have had no idea, because you're so poised and confident, and you did such a really great job there.
Yeah, we hope you feel really proud of yourself.
Frankly, the surprise would have been if this wasn't the worst place.
Wow, you all were very special.
Wow, you all were very special about here. But you guys keep bringing these special things along. And it's like so cool.
Wow. You're going to cry.
I am.
I told the paper that I'm late, I was at night.
They are! You guys, you make what we do here, okay, now you're going to cry. But you make what we do here so worthwhile. And that's, that's why we come and spend these nights together, you know, is to make sure that you've got these cool teachers and this cool place where there really is something for everyone. And you guys have come and, and we are grateful to the teachers and grateful that you come here so willing to do and learn and then you come and share with us. It makes what we do like, wow. And thank you. I think I speak for all of us. I'm the only one that cries, but I can speak for everybody.
I think it's really, kind of, I always kind of come back from the behind-the-scenes. I think Liz and Teri asked me about exploring this process and I think just being open to the fact that there are different ways of doing things. I think the highlight for me this evening is to see the technicalities of writing we can get bogged down with and that that's where students also, I mean, lose that love for expressing themselves in writing. And the other pieces come along as they're getting ready for college and all of that, and you're preparing them for those experiences as well. Students, I'm so glad you shared, out loud, read out loud your pieces how brave and I don't know if I could have done that in high school. It's a pretty outgoing person that just really, just be so proud of that. That is, it's an accomplishment. It's a skill and you now have that to carry forward in whatever you choose to do after high school. So to the teachers, the background of getting ready for this process, they've presented at our Fall In-Service to share with, and it really sparked in other teachers that thinking about the ongoing feedback, really emphasizing feedback over the process or the product. Because in the end, it isn't about the piece of writing, it's the journey, it's what you learn along the way.
It's teaching a growth mindset. Like, writing is never going to be perfect.
It's never perfect.
You can't think that. We are always going to be able to find places to improve. And so just joining them on that journey, it's, it's been exciting for us too.
Yeah, and I know I've observed the back and forth and some, you know, I know we talk about Google Docs and writing or not, but the real in-time feedback that students are getting, they can ask a question, the teachers are able to interact with them differently. It's just, it's really a modern marvel of sorts that we're able to give that kind of feedback in that kind of time and take the grading out of it and think about the experience. It's very cool. Fortunately, we have to give a grade at the end because we've required. The system we work in.
These must have been easy grades.
But I think that, you know, that's the beauty of this, I, I think is that, that was the piece I always struggled with because I might love these pieces, but then maybe, you know, according to a rubric, there was some glitch or some hangup. And I just didn't have, I contemplated that for all these twenty-seven years long at one time. So this was really the grading and it is a philosophical switch, but it's, it's nice because you, you know, I think things do change out of the way, you know, along the way, they evolve, and then it just comes to that point of like, I'm feeling really confident about what they're writing. And that's when all the little things become, to play, you know, when you're shut down right away, it's hard to recruit, you know, recruit from that point. And I think that's a nice thing. And they do really motivate each other, you know, these three and everyone else, I think, in the class too. And they, these guys are especially, were models in their groups, their peers, they sit in pods and their pods are thinking like, I don't know, I'm going to start over, you know? And I'm like, no, no, don't start over. But, you know, that's nice too because then it's not us saying like, look at so-and-so's piece, because you could really look at everybody's piece and there's something from it. Even if I wrote way simpler style than what the next, you know, Caroline does, I can learn something from her that, that she learned something from me. And so it's nice to kind of possess in a more facilitator kind of role.
I think Emily was getting at it too when she was saying that, you know, there's, they're allowed to take risks and to try something that maybe they're, they want to try, but they're scared because it doesn't fit into their rubric. And here, it's, it's a safe space. We're just, try something, put something down, you'll, you'll get your process points. Like, that's part of the process is trying.
We write along with them too.
Yeah.
So sometimes that's good to where they can see like, you're struggling with something or maybe like fall out, we start over. You know, we share something, we pick up a little piece, whatever, like knocking at or whatever. But it's nice because we're all in it together.
Yeah, absolutely.
You seasoned teachers, been teaching for a while, and you're newer to the profession.
Yeah.
So what was it like diving into process-driven writing when you're just perfecting your craft as a teacher and?
Like they were talking about, it's definitely a mindset shift, but just having, you know, the support of Teri and Liz and people's huge and working together on it. But now I definitely wouldn't go back. And I was, I was just thinking the other day about, I think Daniel was actually in my class, we used, what we used to use, we used more of a frigid rubric. And I was thinking about how just arbitrary and inauthentic that felt and how now, you know, students can so easily just ask questions or, did I use this dash right? Or how should I try this metaphor? And I can say, yes, and do it again. Yeah, absolutely.
Kudos to each of our members.
Steve, you know what? It's, it's, it's our school. It's what we have here. We have a culture of learning, and this is an example of that from here to our schools. And that's what we shoot for. And one thing, you know, being a part of this, is the support system that we have to allow teachers to, you know, challenge, you know, the grading system and to think outside of the box. And they've had these ideas and they've been arm wrestling, why do we do it this way? Why can't we do it another way? And to give them the opportunity to do that and to see how it's working is very effective. And that's, that's a team effort, so.
You know, one of the other things that just brings the forefront, we keep hearing about we have such a collaborative staff and you work together, you learn together, you try things. And you're a prime example of that. Here, here you're going out on a limb, trying something new, bringing this back and obviously making a real success of this. And look at the results, and it's amazing. So you'll hear about the collaboration, here we actually see the emotion.
We are marveled every month at the incredible teachers and kids we have. And the blessing you guys brought us to see, all of you. But I mean, I need these meetings, like, talking about ten people. Why do they tend to be off the air? Because it's so, I would have, I don't get to hear this kind of stuff in my life. This is joy and I'm thankful.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the really world of school business, committee reports. Sue, you're up.
I'm up. Sue, get over here.
You're right, guys.
This is Sue's show. You have a great night.
Thanks for being here.
Double Sue.
The draft that you have in your agenda for the Ed for Employment Plan is something that we reviewed at our last curriculum committee meeting. We're required under PI 26 to have an E for E plan. We had education for employment plans in place. The plan we had been working from was from the 2010, 2011 school year. So much of that has been implemented. It's kind of like done, it's not a plan anymore, so we needed to refresh the plan. With the onset of the requirement of the state of Wisconsin, which is also part of PI 26, to also have academic careers planning, curriculum in place for our students, education for employment is a piece of that. But it requires, the requirements of the plan require us to publicly display the efforts and goals we have in place to make sure we're preparing students for the world of work. So it includes not only our academic and career exploration process and lessons that you've heard all of us report on in many, in many ways in our beginning and end of your reports. It includes a description of the Career and Technical Education Program we have at Arrowhead. It gives the trends, labor trends, and information regionally that we have helped. Thank you Kathy Icemo at CISA One for pulling that together. That was a big, if I had pulled that together, it would have taken me another year to probably get the plan in place. It includes also how we engage parents, how we engage students in the process for Ed for Employment. So it's a long document and it includes both long-term and short-term goals for the district, which we've talked about already with the board. In general, the long-term goals of the Education for Employment Plan, they've never changed. They're really part of the mission and vision of Arrowhead High School. The goals long-term, continue to be preparing all students for success after high school for the world of work. Collaborate with post-secondary institutions and regional businesses to ensure nine-toe curriculum is meeting the benchmarks for college and labor force needs, and model promote and celebrate lifelong learning. Our short-term goals will take us through the next few years to accomplish. These are pulled together as a result of multiple teams that we have in place that are working on continuing professional development for our staff and the academic career exploration realm. Continue collaboration with our K-12 counselors. This is a K-12 effort. Education for employment is not just the responsibility of the high school. And so the ongoing collaboration with our K-12 counselors is one way. I meet with GT coordinators on a monthly basis, the superintendents meet, sometimes these are topics that are on the agendas to make sure we're picking things up where our students have some experiences, especially in the middle schools. Build program pathways for career-based learning experiences and growing those experiences. If you have all the time in the world to explore other education for employment plans from other districts, you'll notice some districts have gone as far as saying every single student will have a career-based learning experience before they graduate from high school. We've chosen to say we want to continue to increase those experiences when the students are ready. Because quite frankly, we know that those experiences are important, but by arbitrarily making a graduation requirement that all have some sort of experiences and seems sustainable to us, but to be able to offer choices and ways for students to get those experiences and building those seems like an appropriate long-term goal. Begin a process that considers ways all students get feedback on their growth in life skills, employability skills, the skills that we've identified as no longer soft skills but essential skills for careers. So with that rationale and those goals in mind, that plan emerged, it is, it is a nice one-stop shop if you'd like to know some of the things that we're doing to prepare students for post-secondary success. It will have to be reviewed by the board annually and updated annually. And I've already kind of, we just reviewed it last month and I already have a couple things, oh, we'll probably need to roll that into the Ed for Employment. So it, it is a growing, fluid document, but something that the board is required to review. And now you have it in your hands.
Yes, we have been doing that for years.
The, the annual review of it started in 2018, so we're, yeah.
We're there.
Yeah, we're there.
Yeah, they're now. It's the best one. I mean, we know that. Nobody says.
All in favor of motion to approve the plan?
So who? Second?
Second, anybody have any questions? None of the favors state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Next meeting is April 2nd.
That is April 5th.
That's not the norm. Right, we changed it. Okay. Spring break, our March meeting would be over spring break. And so we kind of combined our March-April meeting in the middle.
Moving on to finance and legislation, Craig.
In our last meeting, February 26th, we had closed session to discuss the water ice center and the facility management agreement. After that, Amy brought to our attention a report in which she noticed they came out of middle school and with the thought that we would have some sort of public relations communication kind of an effort to our citizenry, which would describe more fully some of the things we're doing here. The website is very easy to find, probably more than half of it, except that not a lot of people go there. So if there was an opportunity to get another form of communication, that would be a good thing. We discussed how to go about that. Given the full plates of main people in our administration, we think it's best to go and look at it outside and to try to help us to create such a, such a document. So that's an ongoing, ongoing process. Next, we talked, as we do each year, about facility use fees and student fees. You can see in your packet, the fee schedules for each of those. They do raise some significant amount of money, you can see on those thirty minutes between each fee schedule. The increases are very, very modest, typically a dollar per item, and that's been to the whole of the years. Then we went into budget development, maybe Steve gives a better notion of the balance. The discussion's there.
Sure. We are in the process of kind of putting the finishing touches on the budget. We had a pretty long discussion on buildings and grounds projects this morning, had a buildings and grounds meeting. Our administrative team meetings have been pretty much dominated by budget discussion and the rest, two or three weeks. And as we proceed forward, as we do, and a lot of times, and we've talked about this before, the challenge this year is, obviously, our enrollment decline is a challenge. We combine that with the government formula. And the unknowns are a challenge. You know, how was the state going to fund education at Arrowhead High School? You know, the governor put together his budget and proposed that a couple of weeks ago. We're looking at that, and we probably know that what is in there is probably not going to be exactly what is going to, you know, end up being, you know, the state buying a budget. So, so we're kind of going in, you know, we have a pretty good idea, you know, what our revenue limit numbers are going to be. But they could, they could vary somewhat, but we probably won't know that information until later in summer or in fall possibly. So we have to go, obviously, go in with some assumptions and we'll, we'll review all those assumptions that we've got in the budget on April 2nd, you know, associated with, you know, revenue, revenue limit dollars, is there a hundred-dollar per pupil increase in revenue formula? Or is it a hundred-dollar per pupil categorical aid increase? Those two seem very similar, but how they fund Arrowhead, whether it's in the revenue limit formula and the per pupil, per pupil categorical aid amount is very different. So obviously, we need, we're keeping an eye on that. And, and the challenges associated with some of the buildings and grounds projects, we have been doing this for a couple of years. And, you know, we just don't have enough money to do everything that, that has kind of become a priority one for us. So, so the challenge of prioritizing those projects and making sure we complete projects that are necessary, that involve student safety, you know, other HVAC-type things. It's not real pretty stuff, but it's stuff that we need to accomplish and do to make our buildings as functional as possible, so. So that's been a challenge, and that's kind of where we're at with budget development. And again, we'll have a whole finance committee meeting devoted to budget.
All right, going back, we have a couple of action items. The first one is discussion, action, and the recommended 2019-2020 facility fee schedule, which was in your packet.
We move that we accept the facility use fee schedule as presented.
Second? You have motion, second, any question on that particular one? Hearing none of the favors state aye? Ayes? Opposed? Motion cares. The next one is discussion, action, and the recommended, recommended 2019-2020 student fee schedule.
We move that we likewise accept the student fee schedule as presented.
Second? Motion, second, any questions on that? Hearing none of the favors state aye? Ayes? Opposed? Motion cares. Okay, and as you move to the next meeting, it's April 2nd. William Brown.
Yes, we had our William Brown meeting this morning. And as Stephen said, we started looking at the budget, potential budget for next year. We used to have, well, maybe not recently, but we used to have priority one, priority We used to have, well, maybe not recently, but we used to have priority one, priority two, and priority three things on the budget, which is kind of a joke, there's no way we're ever getting to priority three. We now have priority one, future priority one, and some time off priority twos.
Really out there.
Really out there. It's amazing, we got four items, four top items on priority one, which comes to one and a half million dollars worth of expenditures. We're looking at utilizing $500,000 from the fund balance and the balance through the operating budget. Then we have another 12 items on our future priority one list, which totals three and a quarter million, a little over three and a quarter million dollars. And as Steve indicated, you know, we're spending over a million dollars a year on building and grounds maintenance issues and that kind of stuff. And of course, a lot of that is roofing, and we've got 12 acres of roof, so we're in a constant state of repair, replacement, roofing. But even with the amount that we're spending each year on maintenance and facilities, we're losing ground every year. One thing that we did recommend, so Steve kind of alluded, one of the big items on the priority one list is HBAC. We've got a lot of our HAC units replaced with our last referendum in 1999, and consequently they're all aging, many of them are, were beyond their life expectancies, a lot of them were at that point or close to it when we tried for the last referendum. So we're two or three years past that point, and we're well into even beyond that. Unfortunately, as you recall, last month, we had two HBAC units which weren't even on the top priority list of ones that we expected to need to be replaced, and they failed out $60,000 worth of emergency kind of repairs. So one of the other big items that we have on the list this year is school safety issue. A lot of that is the rekeying of the doors, new locks, rekeying of the doors. So we're looking at a final bid on that, that looks like to be about $145,000. The HBAC remount's going to be approximately $825,000, $200,000 in just regular, not regular, but building envelope maintenance and repairs, again, roofing, a lot of that. And the kiln needs to be replaced from a safety standpoint and efficiency standpoint and one of the other ones. It's kind of a discussion of the board, discussion of the committee. The one, the big item that we talked about last month that was brought forward to the board was the problem of the bleachers or lack thereof on the visitor's side of the stadium, and the problem we've had with rental bleachers, which are actually torn from State Fair Park, which are probably as poor a shape as the ones we tore out a couple of years ago, and the problems of getting them in here on a timely basis, and the fact that they just are not in that shape. So we're looking at, as the recommendation was last month, we're looking at replacing those. That wouldn't happen until, possibly, wouldn't happen this year. That would probably be in the 2020, time for the 2020 football season. We're looking at adding that into the budget. About $500,000 is our best figure at this point for the replacement. I would also include site work as far as asphalt, plugging up the old footings for the old bleachers that were there, and also paving route up to the walkway up to North Campus, so we get students off of the highway between the tennis courts, again, part of our safety issues. So all said, that puts us at $2 million worth of expenditures, potential expenditures for priority one items in the budget, and consequently, plugging approximately a million dollars out of fund balance. So we're looking at that, this will be coming back for further review as we get further in the bargaining process, but certainly a fluid process. So that was the main thing we talked about today. We also looked at some of, you know, some of the stuff that we're going to be doing this fall. The only thing we have on the dockets for this year's project yet to wrap up is the new floor in the West gym. And we are going to go get that done within the budget that was allocated for. We will be adding a roll on the bleachers, cutting back some of the bleachers so that it doesn't extend past the, what's that called, past the screening for the rock climbing area.
Gymnasus.
Gymnasus. So, and they're going to be moving the baskets. They could actually move the baskets down to accommodate that, so that'll be going on. They'll be tackled May 20th, so I'll be starting that renovation. If you recall, there's mercury in that flooring, so that we gotta go through a bit of remediation work in order to get that up safely, and get all the EPA and regulations and that kind of stuff. That's pretty much it, and then we have our next meeting, April 7th, 7:00 AM.
What does the new floor look like?
Similar material, but doesn't have its, it's a composite.
It's not wood.
No, it's a composite, yes, exactly. But they gotta tear that old one out, they gotta, you know, negative pressure, all that kind of stuff, encapsulate and make sure that I have a, I think my group text stuff sticks to the atmosphere and so on, and that'll be. I think it's board.
Yes.
They discussed this to a board.
Yeah. Please don't stress it, there you go. So that should be ready for this fall.
All right, so who's going from here to Craig?
Yeah, but it's just all.
Just know the curriculum.
I love you too.
All right, moving on. For personnel, our next meeting is on March 20th. Polis?
Next meeting, actually, first.
Under other reports, nothing report from WA and Speed. Sue, do you have anything?
I just wanted to mention, I mean, anytime I can hear, like, Sue, you brought up CISA 1. I mean, you would be lost without them. It's amazing what goes on in that building that we don't even know. There are too many programs. Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of them, but I mean, what those people are doing in there, I still go to every meeting and go, like, you're in the headlights, but I just have no idea of all that they're doing. There was a spelling bee going on, a big, very white spelling bee the last time we had a meeting, so lots of people there. The guns are going off from the gun range, you know, the bolt plant. I don't know how they work with that, but they're amazing, and I just love listening to their reports. It's very, very, I'm really glad I've done this, because it opened my eyes. I always thought, oh, what is that? Now I know.
Right, moving on to new business. Under resignations and retirements, we have two that are in active.
Can I move, we accept the resignations?
Second.
Motion, the second, to accept those, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. And we have a list of new contracts and letters of appointment. Who for approval?
Second.
Motion, the second, any questions on this? None, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We have no donations this time? You jump on items, anybody?
If you wouldn't mind, you're wearing a hat for a minute, I wonder if I could share a few. A meeting I had yesterday, kind of accidental. The Upside Down Foundation is in my building, and they helped them get some office space many years ago, and so I get to bump into a lot of arrowheads, special needs kids, lots of other kids from all around the community. There was a mom there yesterday, and so she and I sat down and talked for probably a half an hour with Robin Lyons, who's the director. Lady had her daughter, who was 15-years-old, Emma, told me where she goes to school, she said at home. And then her mom explained to me that she had been a student at one of the other area districts and had gotten as far as high school, only to find that it took huge, huge amounts of efforts to get an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, for that student put in place in a way that was suitable for somebody with this young lady's needs. And once the plan was put in place and nicely typed and signed off by everybody, it was promptly ignored. The girl spending about half of her time literally sitting out in the hallway alone, well, her classmates were there. And meeting this kid, she was not a disruptive kid, and so there had to be reasons other than that, but they're putting her out in the hallway. It gets to the point where the family was asking the state of Wisconsin to come in and bring in help, and that wasn't happening quickly enough, and their daughter was experiencing anxiety attacks and other emotional problems from the lack of interaction with peers and, you know, being put on her own for great lengths of time. And so mom took her out of the school, and decided she was going to educate her at home. But she's not quick to do it, she has no background in education, and she loves her child dearly, but, you know, it would be hard enough to teach a kid who has all sorts of natural ability how to function in the world and learn their academics, and to take a kid who, number one, you have the challenge of being a parent trying to teach the kid, and number two, you don't necessarily know all that stuff well, well yourself. And so I was able to tell her that Arrowhead High School has been open enrollment spots for special needs kids this coming year. And she literally sat at my conference table and cracked. So I am telling you that when we, when I make a stink when we're talking about availability of open enrollment seats for the special needs kids, this family had no alternative, and now they do. And it's because we just worked for it to approve it, and it's because our administration found a way to make our formula work to open our doors to kids like that. So I guess I want to say thank you, and I want you to know that those sorts of numbers have super-duper real-life impacts. I'm not even sure that the family's going to elect to come here, but just knowing that they now have one alternative out there made a world of difference. Just thought I'd update you.
I have one thing, Mr. President. Had an opportunity recently to be contacted by some staff members here at Arrowhead regarding a young man that competed in the state DECA competition. His name is Jack Sullivan, he's a sophomore. Been dealt not a very nice hand, his father passed away last year. He placed fourth overall in Integrated Marketing Campaign Event in the Restaurant Food Service Marketing, and is set to attend the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida. I worked with Jack as his Eagle Scout project, and we raised some money for him to complete a kiosk in the Centennial Park for the Ice Age Trail. So what I would propose tonight, or I'm asking for, whether this should be done during the meeting or after the meeting, if anybody would like to help Jack get to Orlando, Florida, they can donate in his name to Arrowhead High School and submit it to the school. Going to try to get him some money to go.
I can just jump onto that in interjection. Arrowhead had a record number, 37 DECA students competed the state competition, and of those 37, 28 of them qualified for the international convention that Mr. Dean is talking about in Orlando. And Mr. Melsner, the, well, it's teacher, but also the advisor of DECA, he and several of those DECA students will come in next month. So they'll be able to talk about the state tournament, that upcoming Orlando tournament, and just exactly what they've learned along the way in DECA and what they've accomplished. It's impressive.
I can jump on that. I had an opportunity to talk to Steve today, and, you know, they have to project how many students are going to go one year ahead. So for instance, he projected maybe 18 that were going to be going this year. Well, blew that out of the water. And they had the tickets all set up. Well, to get those other kids to get last-minute tickets, we're going to be about $700 apiece. Steve has worked with a network, with a travel agent who deals with all these different schools, and there was a school in Milwaukee that didn't have the number of kids that they allotted the tickets for, and so they were able to swap tickets. And so Steve really went above and beyond in that respect as well, to get these other kids to get tickets for $350 as opposed to $7. So kudos to Steve on that.
Absolutely, very proactive.
Yes, very proactive.
If anybody would like to give a check, you can certainly give it to me, made out to Arrowhead.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
Well, you can make one out. If you make one, I'll make one, make out two right away.
Okay, anybody want to add on to that?
I don't.
Just as a reference too, for on April 27th, last Saturday, April week, our Hall of Fame, Athletic Hall of Fame induction event at 7:00 SE, all the information, if you'd like to attend, is on our website, under Athletics or I. The Hall of Fame has all our inductees that are going to come in this year. Great class, had the opportunity to sit on the selection committee, and have done so since the beginning of doing this, and it's always, we got Chuck Dells from our team, and Chuck remembers everything, right embellished some things, but he remembers everything. So we kind of weed through it, but he's a great resource, is all that the number of the team are. And I heard they have a really great MC, so it's.
Isn't that the same, is that the same weekend as the lobster ball?
I'm not sure.
It's always the end of the, it's always around the.
I can check my calendar.
I'm pretty sure, I put it too, if I got it in my calendar, but.
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday, I know.
Yes, the lobster boil is Friday, the 26th, and the athletic banquet is Saturday.
Right, so I'm trying to promote that they're both that weekend, but they're both great events.
Sue, it's prom.
No way.
I don't think she's going to prom.
She might ask me.
Ryan Mannion drives back and forth between the rooms.
Yeah, he does.
Eating two meals.
Never let it be said that there's not enough going on in Arrowhead.
I do not believe I will make lobster meetings.
What's that?
I don't think I'll make lobster meetings.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
God, thank.
Everybody.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye. You can name any name.
Yeah.
Craig Thompson, you have the slides completed.